Welcome, everybody. And I'm going to call the meeting to order at 5:40. To the planning board meeting for February 15. And I'm going to start with a roll call. And Tori.
Present.
And Misha.
Present.
Amy.
Present.
Jonathan.
Here.
Tia is absent. She tried to get here, but her flight was delayed, so she's not here. Jen. Jim. Jessie.
Here.
And. I'll say Jen is there. No, I didn't. Put it down. So we're going to start with the approval of the minutes.
Hey, Madam Chair.
Oh.
Shannon. I'm here. I'm having technical difficulty, so I'm on my iPhone.
Okay, great. We couldn't see you, but it's good to hear you, so we're glad you're there. Um, so we're going to start with the approval of the minutes that were sent out to everybody. And do I have a motion to approve? Is there a second? Is there any discussion? I have one comment, and that is I appreciate Jen in your efforts to make them more readable, and I love the highlighting, so thank you very much. Then have a discussion. Okay, I'll call for the vote. Tori.
Four.
Okay, Misha. Four. Amy.
Four.
Jonathan.
Four.
Shannon.
Four.
Jim.
Four.
Jessie. Four. And me. Four. Okay. Is there any comments from the general public that is not on anything that is listed on the agenda? Are there any comments from the public that are not listed on, or things that are not listed on the agenda? Okay. So I'm going to close the general public comment. It's time. And we'll go on to new business. I just wanted to thank everybody for attending the city commission meeting last week for the city manager's presentation on the implementation of the growth policy. I thought it was an impressive turnout for all of the boards, but especially was impressed with the participation by the planning board. I didn't know if there was going to be a link to the presentation only or to his PowerPoint on that. Is there going to be a link somewhere that could be the people that wanted to?
I tried to get it up yesterday. I had a technical difficulty.
Okay, so there will be one, and we will be advised with that. I'd also like to welcome Amy to the board. And thanks for serving on the planning board. It was officially approved by the city commission. And thanks for inviting me as chair, too. And I appreciate that. And there's one point, and that is since we're reading in person, just the procedure for letting know and Jen know if you aren't going to make it. So just send an email, send a text so that we kind of know what's going on, or who's sick, or whose flight is delayed, or whatever it may be. So we're not here waiting. So I appreciate that. And we are in the process, I think Grant was saying that maybe the meeting that was held before this one is going to be possibly switched so that we can get into this room a bit sooner so that, so that you can, you know, plan to be here by 20ish or whatever to get yourself set up. So just wanted to let you know that. And we're going to move on to the next item, and that is review and approve the planning board 2022 annual report to be presented to the city commission. And I'd like to thank Jessie for submitting it. It was in your computer files, so I don't think everybody's had a chance to read it, so I don't think we have to read it out loud unless you want to.
I do not. What do you want?
I didn't have any questions about that. Yeah, so I was going to have maybe a motion and then have any questions or? No? We have a motion to accept the annual report for 2022.
A second.
And is there any discussion or any questions that you have for Jessie on that?
I thought it looked great. I had two comments. It was Don Castellic, not Dan.
Oh, shoot.
And then Lila Feischman, there is no C in her last name. So, but I don't, great.
Are those just editing errors that we can change without any big deal?
Would you mind?
So that?
I'll just send it back to you soon.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you for catching that.
Yeah. Thanks, Tom. Um. So is there any other discussion or questions? Okay, we'll call for the vote on the motion to accept the annual report. Tori.
Four.
Misha.
Four.
Amy.
Four.
Jonathan.
Four.
Shannon.
Four.
Jim.
Four.
Jessie. Four. Stacy. Four. Okay. Um, we have a little card here. Oh. For appreciation for all the work that you did through the whole growth policy and just all the work that you put in towards the planning board. And we just really appreciated your efforts.
Thank you, Stacy. Thank you. I appreciate it. That's very nice to hear. It's been a pleasure, and I'm glad I'm still here.
Yeah, we are, too.
Yep. Thank you.
Um. So I had one other thing before we get on to the next item. And that was, if you looked on the city website, we tested on this at the last meeting, and that was just the purpose of the planning board. And again, since we haven't had a chance to really meet together in the past two years, it's been kind of online and all focused on the growth policy. So I just wanted to reread that, this, which is from a city website, that we are an advisory committee to the Livingston City Commission and propose policies for subdivision plans, development of public ways, place structures and utilities, issuance of improvements, and laying out public ways and services. And upon request, the public of the public body, the city planning board will prepare a growth policy to promote public health, safety, morals, convenience, general welfare, efficiency, and the economy. I think, Amy, you were wondering, you know, at your interview, kind of, what does the planning board do? So I just wanted to put that back out there and remind everybody that that's what we do. And that part of that, in order to fulfill that, is to get other information from the city staff to help us make informed decisions when we do have something that needs to come before this group. So we are greatly appreciative of what the city staff does to help us learn and grow and educate ourselves. So, which we're going to see later on. And the other thing I was just wondering was if, since we have some new people and not everybody's technical, I'm not a super technical person. But if you wanted to, does anybody want or feel like they need a printed copy of the growth policy? Because if not, you have access to it online, then just checking. Okay. I don't hear anybody, see anybody? Okay. Great. Um, we're going to move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the planned unit development and introduction and role of the planning board in the process. And this is going to be presented by both Jennifer and Grant, who's the city manager. You didn't know that already. So I'm going to turn it over to you.
Thank you. I'll make sure that I'm sharing. All right. Let's see if this works. There we go. Okay. Um. Yeah, thanks. This is just kind of meant to be a general introduction. If you look at growth policy, pages 96 and 222, the growth policy recommends that we adopt a PUD ordinance, planning unit development ordinance. And they provided like a template of example ordinance, and it says, you know, pretty much tailor it to our zoning format, our needs, that sort of thing. So. Grant, Major, and Jim Willough, the building director, and I have been sort of looking through around Montana. Right now, we're kind of focused on the PUD ordinances and places that have the same type of government that we have, general government. Bozeman has a charter. Our cities have a charter. Calisso has a PUD ordinance. They are a general government. Harden, which I know is smaller than Livingston, they have general government. Columbia Falls is kind of similar in size. So we kind of look at those, trying to see, compare different ordinances to see what light and errors, what we thought maybe needed to be done differently. And so, yeah, that's one of the things we've been working on. Um, so I'll just go over planning development basics, how the PUDs, I've kind of already touched on it in the growth policy, the recommendation, the creation of the PUD ordinance, because this will be a zoning change, and how that ordinance is adopted. And then just right now, what we are, in general, the concept, how we're envisioning the PUD application review process. The cities that I mentioned all have combined zoning planning boards, which makes it tricky here, because as you know, we don't. And there's two components to the PUD process. It is the rezoning of an area. So it's almost like an overlay district. And then also the review of either preliminary development plan or preliminary plan, depending on how it comes in. And that is what the planning board would look at. So you're looking at two different things, but you're also sort of seeing the bigger picture. So we're still kind of trying to figure out timeline process, but I can give you what we have so far. Um. Yes. And, yeah, so the basic planning unit development, just the purpose behind it, it allows greater flexibility for the type of development you could do, building configurations, uses than you can typically have under the base zoning that's there. For example, right now, a lot of the north side, the base zoning is R2, which does allow for some commercial uses, but it is typically a residential district. Planning unit development allows for multiple uses. Depending, each one is different as it comes through, but multiple uses on a property. Um, they, again, include multiple uses, residential, commercial, recreational, different housing types is a good, a lot of PUDs often have that. Some PUDs can be all residential and just have different housing types, residences, townhomes, condos, multifamily, which of course provides a variety of housing types and typically has different ranges of affordability as well. So, again, process promoting. If you guys can't see, we can't see. I can't see this. You can see. You guys can see, no, the zoom on your.
It's not going on your PowerPoint.
Okay. No, no, that don't come up. I'm sorry. So I'm trying to move this, though. Sorry. So the things that the PUD process promotes is kind of protection of natural areas. So developments that offer enhanced protection of natural resources, sensitive environmental features, streams, wetlands, floodplains, steep slopes that may be difficult to build on, on part of a property, woodland wildlife habitats, plant communities. A lot of this is achieved just through the allowance of clustering development. So you might have 20 acres parcel and seven acres of it, open space that's passive. And then you're allowing different densities on the area that they are for those 13 acres. So that's kind of a big plus of the PUDs. Typically, you get a lot more open space and park space than you would if somebody developed it with the base zoning. You also get, again, mixed use development. They can contain a mix of residential and non-residential uses. And have on the same PUD residential, commercial, civic, open space. They're all kind of located in close proximity to each other. So it's convenient for the people that live in the PUD. But these typically, especially the open spaces, are not reserved just for the PUD. So people in the rest of the community can use them. One of the other benefits typically is this type of ordinance and this type of development encourages traditional urban development or traditional, you know, historic city of Livingston patterns, what you'd see on the south side of the tracks. It's typically characterized by parcel configurations, street patterns, the gridded street network, street skapes, neighborhood amenities that are more to the neighborhood scale. So you're not really looking at big box stores here. You're looking at maybe like a small format store or kind of local owned stores, that kind of thing. Typically, people talk about traditional neighborhood development. They talk about kind of what you'd see before the 1950s. I don't love that explanation of it, but it's pretty sound. I think for a while, people were going into the big residential neighborhoods, single family residential cul-de-sacs. Now, I think a lot of places are moving back to that traditional neighborhood layout, which is really what the growth policy encourages. So that's kind of this type of ordinance and development helps make that happen. Also promotes a coordinated transportation network, not only within the PUD, so the gridded street network, it's easier for vehicles to move around and get to the different types of uses, but also looking at pedestrian movement, bicycle movement, and connections with the areas outside the PUD. So it's not this little enclave that only kind of functions in itself. You know, we would want to, I think, encourage the connections as we would in a regular subdivision development and review to the surrounding area. So it's an integrated network. And then, again, as I talked about, another thing that PUD development encourages is a rising variety of housing types, different sizes, affordability, multifamily condos, single family duplexes, ADUs. You know, another thing, sorry, go back to that, is workforce housing. You know, it may be, and one of the things I think we're thinking about, because I'll get to this at the center, is, is, you know, how to say, hey, you know, we can give you a density bonus if you maybe do restrict some of this to, you know, affordable multifamily or to some workforce housing. The details of kind of how we're going to do that still to be worked out, but these are the kind of things that we're seeing in other places and the things that we think we want based on what the growth policy is recommending as to how we grow. So again, I already kind of touched on the PUDs in the growth policy where it talks about it. It's, if you blink, you miss it. It's a really, the policy's a big document, and there's like six, seven pages that talk about PUDs as far as going through providing the ordinance. But it is really, I think, an important part of, you know, how we can guide growth on some of these vacant properties that are left. You know, that's kind of what's left to be developed. And, you know, we're in a housing crisis. And so trying to sort of find a way to make that happen so, you know, the developers can kind of make something work for them and the city can guide and get growth that we want to see. And so if you, if you watched Grant's presentation at the city commission meeting, you have seen the slide, basically initial work plan for how we're implementing the growth policy, touches on land use recommendations, housing, resiliency, placemaking, and community character. And PUDs really kind of hit all of these to some extent. The land use recommendations is the flexible subdivision and site design that you would look at. The rezoning is part of that, too, that the zoning commission works on. The housing, again, promoting housing variety, density bonuses maybe that can be given depending on how you, you know, allot your housing and your layouts. The resiliency part of it, again, a big part of PUDs typically is the natural resource protection. So not developing in those areas that we want to keep undeveloped, especially when we're looking now at floodplains, we'll be knocking the floodplain after the flood. A lot of times, PUDs will have buffers around, you know, from a water source or from a habitat, something like that. So that's kind of how PUDs can look to address resiliency and then placemaking, community character. Again, we talked about the traditional neighborhood design, urban design, Livingston patterns of neighborhoods. And that's something that we can encourage with a PUD ordinance. And so recommendations in chapter 11, which is where this, the PUD ordinance recommendation comes up. If you look through growth policy, Grant and I have been through a couple dozen times. You'll see there's, you know, the strategies come out from like chapter two to chapter 10, and then chapter 11 is kind of a narrow its own thing. But it's all land use recommendations. And so, you know, the big things that hits on, you know, the zoning ordinance update, which is the zoning overhaul, we've talked about, that's, we're going to be getting an outside consultant to help us with that because it is looking at the entire chapter 30 zoning code and adjusting it, revamping it, modifying it, whatever needs to be done so that it is consistent with and supports the growth policy. Right now, there's a lot of areas, again, we have a lot of R2 zoning in a lot of areas. That is not directly supportive of saying, we want to see a lot more housing, we want housing density, we want to promote infill. That's not maybe the best way from a zoning standpoint to promote infill development in what's already there. Again, the subdivision regulation review. This one is kind of waiting to see what happens, I think, with the legislature. So we're kind of not, we're going to hold off on that, I think, to see, because there's some things that are going through the legislature. I have not been following it as closely as Jen has. But those bills, if they get through, will influence what we can do and what we have to do, what we're allowed to do for subdivision regulations and updates. Future land use map, again, if you're going to adjust the zoning to support the growth policy, if you look at the future land use map right now in the growth policy, I would say it's not entirely consistent with, you know, encouraging infill and discouraging sprawl. So I think we want to kind of look at this holistically, all of those at the same time. And then again, the last, the land use recommendation in chapter 11 is the planning unit development zoning districts. Um. These are the various growth policies, the strategies. Remember, there's the, you know, we've got goals, and then we have 260 something strategies.
219.
219. A lot. So this is a handful. Some of them were dubious, though, certainly. But in general, yeah, over 200. And there's quite a few that either directly mention PUDs or support a PUD ordinance. This is behind me. You can't see them. Um. Updating codes to promote traditional neighborhood designs, and that's the historic street layouts. Encourage following Livingston's historic block and alley development pattern. Amending the zoning higher density, variety of land uses and areas that can support it. Again, you know, when we're talking about PUD, we're still looking at, is what's being proposed, you know, is that appropriate development, what they're proposing, based on what's surrounding it? You know, I was thinking about this last night. A lot of these larger cities that have PUDs and Calisso doesn't necessarily have housing already established around it or communities. I don't know that we have as much of that. And so I anticipate that some PUDs will come through where they're going to be in the middle of, you know, there's already neighborhoods or at least, you know, housing around them, residences. And so it's a little bit different. I think you have to kind of see, is it appropriate for that, what's going on? Growth that maintains development patterns. And that's kind of where that clustering comes in, building emissions, development with Livingston's historic development pattern. And I don't think that's to say that we can't have any single family residential, but that's kind of the beauty of PUDs. And I'll show you an example of each one. And then you can have another section in the PUD where it's also multifamily or apartments or condos. So, you know, it's just having nothing but that. I think that's not necessarily just single family residential for a large tract of land. It's not entirely consistent with the growth policy.
Can I ask a question? Is there enough of your presentation? So if you, so I'm just kind of thinking the reality of this. So if you, so when you think about a PUD, if a developer buys a lot in an R2 on the north side of town, but wants to do something different than R2 is designated, does he, do you just sort of request that PUD plan for just that one lot that he or she purchased? Or? Then I think about the north side, there's like 11 acres that kind of go up the hill that's for sale. Somebody would buy that entire thing, but if they had a PUD, they could do multiple different projects in there.
So and I'll show you in a minute, in a bit. It's phasing is typically part of PUDs, but it is all, all of the, the, whatever's in the PUD has to be under one ownership or an LLC. It can't just be like five owners say, hey, we want to put it on our lots and we want to do this. It is, it is, and the reason for that is it's, you know, if you have five owners, you know, maybe one, their situation changes, they need to sell it. Then you have to go back and run the PUD through again, because now that part of the PUD is no longer what was approved and was reviewed. So the PUD is pretty tight as far as it comes through the review, and that's what you review. And then if there's changes, it, you know, and I'm not talking about, okay, we were going to have 98 apartments, now we're going to have 96. That's probably something we can look into the ordinance to administratively. But really, you know, the PUD, there's the expectation from the developer and the review boards and the city commission and the public that that is what's going to be developed. They told us how they're phasing, they told us when they're adding stuff during those phases. And so that's why the one ownership that we're seeing or under one entity like an LLC, that's what we're seeing in other ordinances, and I think it's a good idea.
Okay. Thank you. It's kind of locking them in.
Yeah, in a way. And it's, you know, and if they're not able, the PUD also does not like go with the land. So it's not like we have a PUD and then, you know, they weren't able to develop it, and then five years later, somebody comes along. It's not going to be like, okay, we'll pick up that. That was five years ago. If you want to do that even now, you're still, we'll have probably a time limit that it lasts. Whereas if you don't file the preliminary plan with us and start on a phase one, then it's going to expire. And I don't think we've figured out that timeline yet. We're still.
Yeah. The growth policy, it says two years for something or finish in it or showing that it will be nearing completion by.
Well, the first phase, yeah, the first phase. Because a lot of these, again, the one I'm going to show you from Calisso, I think it's like six or seven phases. It takes years for some of these to come to fruition, but you have to at least start. You have to file that, either the preliminary plat, if it's going to be platted, or the preliminary development plan within a certain timeframe and start on it. Otherwise, you, the PUD overly district goes away and it reverts back to the base zoning. Otherwise, you, the PUD overly district goes away and it reverts back to the base zoning.
And, and just to not to interrupt, you're doing a great job. But really, the only kind of finer clarification point, I would say, is just consider this as almost like an alternate subdivision application for large lots, sometimes, right? So we will have a minimum lot size. You know, I don't imagine that that minimum lot size is gonna be just a half acre, an acre, but we'll have a minimum lot size, more than likely, a lot of them do a minimum lot size.
And it might be for different parts of the PUD.
Exactly.
And isn't there a maximum that this falls under, like 10,000 or something?
10,000.
Acres?
Acres. Well, we don't, we don't have any tracts that large.
But I mean, isn't there before it becomes a subdivision itself, the minimum amount of acreage in subdivision, certain amount?
Yeah, there, there is a unit. And that's kind of what yes, we would have kind of a minimum.
Yeah, and I, and that's one thing I'll get to, that different ordinances do differently. Um, and that's one thing I think we'll, you know, want some input on is, is, you know, somehow, um, you know, for residential PUD, it's primarily residential or all residential can be this size. For a smaller, you know, commercial PUD, it can be this size. I don't know that for Livingston, that all of that specific makes sense, so we're still kind of moving that. Maybe it's just like for any PUD, it's a minimum, you know, I don't know, three or four acre lot size. Or maybe it's even looking at, you know, the minimum area to be developed for a PUD to come through this. Because it is an onerous process. I mean, it's, it's, I'll, let me get to this part, because you'll see, this is on the developer. Uh, we want to encourage them, we want to give them incentives, but it is for the developer to show us the, the public good, the reasoning why they need to deviate from that base zoning to go through this process. Um, so, um, yeah, and again, this part about, you know, partnering with developers to include community facilities um to serve that development. Um, and, and it's possible, and, and we're still again looking at some of the, the lever part of this, I think. But I think, you know, if there's ways to have joint use facilities in there, um, you know, if they have a park, you know, a neighborhood park or something with a playground, like if that can be a joint use with, with the rest of the city, I think that makes sense, especially in a town, a city the size of Livingston. So, um, yeah. Um, so ordinance creation and adoption, again, I'll just say this really quickly, because this really is, um, this is all pretty much the zoning commission, because the PUD ordinance itself is a new um zoning category. Um, so it's, I talked to the zoning commission last night and presented a version of this um presentation to them. Um, I wanted some bolts, um, since they're doing, again, the, the rezoning part of it. You know, there's two parts to this, it's the rezoning. And then it's also the review of either the preliminary development plan or if it's subdivision, that, the preliminary plat that you do. So it's two parts to it, um, and they're contingent on each other. So you can't have the zoning commission saying, okay, we're gonna rezone this PUD and then the planning board doesn't accept the preliminary development plan and vice versa. So they both have to go through it. Um, so just like any other rezoning, zoning commission, the next thing for them is we bring them a draft ordinance, um, with their input that we're asking for, and they review it. And then they make a recommendation to the city commission. This is the city commission, they have a public hearing there. And if it is um adopted, um, then in 30 days, it takes effect. Any rezoning, it takes 30 days after the city commission approves it to take effect.
Just a quick question, is in any of this discussion of the zoning, um, is there any communication with the planning board? Or is there any, I mean, I would think that they have to kind of communicate sort of.
Yes and no, and I'll, let me get to the next slide, I think you'll understand a little better. Um, you each have your areas that you're reviewing, but we're not only sending you the plat. You're gonna see what they're proposing as far as deviations in, in zoning for the PUD. Vice versa, they are also, zoning is gonna see sort of um what's going on with the, the, some of the street layouts and the easements and utilities, that kind of thing that you would typically look at in a subdivision. But, you know, we do need to make sure that each, the zoning commission and the planning board are only reviewing and discussing what's in their purview. So you, you can't be, like, the use, this discussion will not be something um similar to any subdivision you review. The use discussion is not a planning board thing. It's more the layout and the physical aspect of it, if that makes sense. This is.
I, I'm, who in the end marries the two together? So that, that the zoning kind of
Commission.
can put it together with the uh preliminary plat to say, oh, well, this, this is an oversight here on the um planning board, or this is an oversight, or, you know, to match, to match the two.
So it's, it's, um, it staff will be reviewing this, and we're reviewing both at the same time, if they're coming through concurrently. That's how we see it right now. Again, we have some issues to work out with the fact that we have two different boards.
Right.
Makes sense what I'm. Complicated, but we expect, um, the way I'm seeing this work, and, and again, we still have to find out, you know, if developers are saying, well, that's not really doable for us to have all the zoning stuff ready. And then if something goes wrong, then we have to go back to the beginning and change the preliminary plat. So again, we're still kind of trying to figure out that, the one glitch that we have that others don't have to deal with. We have the two boards, and so the timing on that, I think we're still trying to figure out. But, um, one of the things that we would like to include in this process, and it was brought up last night, uh, that people would like to have the public outreach happen earlier in the process. Um, and so something that Calisbell does, that I really like the idea of, is, you know, we have a typical pre-application conference with staff and the developer, the city staff would be fire, public works, building, planning. Um, but then, it's either once the application comes in or we're, you know, we can consider, maybe it's, you know, in order to submit your application, you have to have some sort of outreach. But Calisbell has what they call a work session. It's one month in advance of when this goes to their planning and zoning board. Um, and it's an informational meeting, it's not a public hearing, so there's no discussion on appropriateness. Or it's basically public, um, the developer, the boards that are actually gonna be involved in the review, asking, you know, clarification questions, but it is not a public hearing, it is really just information sharing. So that, I, I think the, the purpose of that is so that the public's not hearing about this the first time when it hits zoning and planning. Um, and I think, um, I like this idea, um, especially when you're talking about something that maybe has, you know, higher density and mix of uses. Um, and so if we can, if we can do this, it's, I, again, Calisbell's doing it, so I think we could do it. We're just trying to figure out where it's gonna happen.
Excellent idea.
Yeah. So these may not be 100% concurrent, but basically after the work session, you've got the zoning, the rezoning part of it, the use deviations from the base zone district. That is what the zoning commission's gonna be looking at. And then the planning board is going to be having a public hearing on the preliminary development plan or preliminary plat, whichever it is. Um, again, it, it may be that somehow, some, I, I don't know how it would be that you would have your meeting before zoning. I think it's always gonna be done first. But basically, whatever you decide, you, the, the zoning, the rezoning is contingent on the, the preliminary plat being approved by you. Similar, your preliminary property rule is contingent on that rezoning going through. And then the goal, I think for us is, you know, you have these two boards that have to, and missions that have bring them to the city commission to do that. Um, because it goes similar to, if you had a very North Town, we had that.
We had it with North Town.
And so it goes to the city commission at the same time. And they, and they look at it. Um, so that's what I see. And then that, the, the final plat filing, that's done, developer comes, city staff, you file, you get in a river, like you work with the subdivision, and there's a timeline that that happens. We don't really.
So when you say the looks at a particular already, or maybe it's on each one differently?
So each PUD is site and context specific.
So they have to have a preliminary plat first in order to get the zoning to.
Not necessarily. You do, they develop these, what we're seeing in other places is we're developing them at the same time.
Okay, so the zoning would be talking about it at the same time as the preliminary plat would be reviewed by the planning board?
Yes.
The same, same week or whatever.
Yeah, if, if you're doing a subdivision review, you're not looking at changes in zoning, right? You're looking at sort of the layout, you're looking at easements, the physical sort of form. Whereas when they're looking at a zoning amendment, they don't necessarily need to know 100% or go into discussion about the they're looking at the zoning, I mean setbacks, yes. Um, the, the building forms, but where that is, where the buffers are, that's, I see more planning work. So it can be, and again, I think we're gonna get some feedback from the first developer that brings this through. Um, you know, of how that works for them, you know, I guess in Calisbell, it works at the same time. They bring an annexation, if they have to annex, they have all one meeting, they have three staff reports, they combine them into one. You have an annexation, you've got the rezoning, you've got when they're in plat.
It seems like the, the, the most important thing then in this would just be that you have to have that work session. So that you really bring the information out to everybody and get the information.
Yeah. You'll have the same application
Separate boards.
that you review, but again, we just, us reminding that the purview, what you're looking at is, is really no different than us.
The PUD overlay district, the zoning commission will say, is that they decide the zoning for that specific lot? Or could you make the whole city an overlay district and just put
So this is site and context specific and this might, um, let me actually, I'm gonna skip this one and go to this. So the, the big part of what's gonna be in the application, the project components, is, is the deviation from the base zone. So I'm in an R2 district, okay, this is what's allowed, and this is minimum 7,500 square foot lot, it's allowed. When they come in with their application, it has to be very explicit, we are requesting to deviate from minimum lot size. This is what we're proposing. We are requesting to deviate from the maximum height allowed. This is what we're proposing. Um, and all of that is very clearly laid out in what they're asking for. And then the onus is on the developer to tell us why that's necessary. Why is that for the public good or for the benefit of this community? Are we, are we requesting this so that we can have a higher density over here so that we leave all this open space alone? Because it's wetlands. You, you know what I'm talking about, like, it's, it's, that's where it really is a lot of information from them to say why. Now, why would he want to, I would like to go through this, maybe just throw up, you know, a, a residential subdivision? Well, because that's where the, the bonuses tend to be sent us. Density bonuses, height bonuses, we're gonna allow you, as PUD here for this site, we're gonna allow you to have apartments or these sorts of stuff. That's kind of figuring out what's appropriate. Now, is having that, you know, is having the the D6 story apartment building right next to single family residential established development, is that appropriate? That maybe the, or maybe the park, that's kind of where all this comes into play. You can be really creative in, in getting the types of things you want to interconnect transportation network and some of the amenities of the neighborhood scale. Um, that you wouldn't be able to get with that base zone. Um, density bonuses, height bonuses residential, and I don't know how we can do this, but can we say, hey, okay, well, you can have this density bonus if you did restrict 10 of the 90 units that you're building to be workforce housing in perpetuity. So, you know, they're, okay, well, we get an extra 40 units that are market rate if we put in 10. Sure, that sounds like a good deal to us, you know? So I think that's kind of um, what we're seeing and what we're thinking. Um, did you have a question? Okay, and I can't tell.
Is now a good time to ask more questions or are you?
Pass it away. The only thing I wanted to say, it was, um, this is one that is, uh, I think this one went through a couple months ago in Calisbell. So this just gives you kind of a general idea of what you could do. This is almost 38 acre parcel. Um, their base zoning is a commercial zone, minimum lot size 7,000 square feet, minimum lot width 70 feet. Um, they went through the PUD process, um, and the deviation from that initial zoning was now minimum lot size less than half as big, so you hired them to be right. Minimum lot width, instead of 70 feet, they're asking the 25 and 35 feet, depending on the type of uses. So that's, that's a lot higher density, right? Yeah, and so, but they're, I mean, look, they have plenty of green space that they have, you know, commercial uses. They have a youth athletic center, a T town, small stadium, um, other neighborhood retail, small workshops. Oh, for all, they're proposing 99 towns. I think this is what would end, a whole new time, phase two, this is what we're gonna add on to that. Um, I think the, the houses here, if I remember, are built in three different phases. Um, parks and open space, 38 acres, almost 11 acres of that is, is open space. It's, there's a central green outdoor common area, the landscape have biking pedestrian paths. So I think you're getting more of that than you probably would if somebody put in a single family residential subdivision. And maybe that also can be, if you have those small scale neighborhood amenities, maybe those people don't have to drive as far to get to, you know, maybe if you have a drugstore or you have maybe boutique hotel, I don't know about that. I don't, I don't, this one said it was like 100 room hotel, which doesn't strike me as super boutique, but, um,
It's cool. It can be bougie.
Exactly. Bougie, boutique, whatever you call it. Um, but yeah, it's, it's really what we think is neighborhood scale and appropriate for Livingston, right? And so that's, that could be different for each PUD. Each PUD is going to have its own slot in our code. It's gonna be an overlay district for that PUD. Uh, you know, I think they have out of 20 different PUDs in their ordinance.
So if you have or if there's a highway and uh the developer comes to the city with a plan in the very first phase of that, would you be able to say, you know, hey, I mean, consider a PUD for this property? You know, I, I just throwing it out there, developer, this vision for what you're putting like.
Yeah, no, I think definitely, I don't know that it's appropriate for, you know, when, when something comes as an application, and, and we, we kind of have to take what's, what the application says and move through. I think there is more dialogue from what I understand in, in the PUD process, it's a little more back and forth dialogue with the developer. Hey, this is kind of what we're wanting to see, hey, this is kind of what we need to do. Um, I think that if somebody came in with a large plot of land that maybe met, if we have a minimum size requirement for PUD and wanted to do all, you know, commercial, I think, yes, I, here's our PUD ordinance, if you want to take a look. Um, you know, this is kind of, you, you might be able to have a mix of uses, this is consistent with our growth policy. I think definitely bringing in, you know, this is what our growth policy says, so you want to keep this in mind, because this is what we're going to be looking at if it's a subdivision review versus, um, you know, if they're just going for zoning, then, and they don't need to, I don't know that, that the PUD works.
Okay.
Um, it's, it's, you're gonna have to have a set plan too. So it's not like somebody would come in with like, I don't know, an Ava Parsons, say, I just want to make this like all commercial. If, if, if it, if what they want to do complies with the base zoning district, they don't need to do this. This is the deviation in zoning and because it's a PUD, because there's This is the deviation in zoning and because it's a PUD, because there's some then is, then we are going to say, okay. Typically, we might not ask you for all this information for, you know, a zoning variance, but because you're doing it as a PUD and you're going to get some, something out of it. We want to see how this is going to be established. We want to see the phasing. We want to see how you're going to connect to other things. So it's getting a more holistic way of kind of looking at something. And again, the creativity that, that it allows, um, I think can be a really good thing.
So.
I was gonna say, how, um, I think we've heard a lot from. People and then also developers somewhat that a lot of what the zoning requirements are, especially mixed use are already too flexible. Um, and so I think that like, if, if we're doing like, so I guess I, I was wondering how applicable. Well, do you think this is when like the mixed use is really allow, allow a lot of different uses and. What, how do you think see that fitting in and do we need, well, we need to like tighten like requirements a little bit to. Make it more incentives for like density bonuses and things like that.
Just to make it more what I'm starting.
To just like get more interest in this because of everything, because the current zoning is already too flexible in a lot of different areas.
Well, you know, again, I, I, I go back to the fact that, and Tori, I see your hand. We are planning on overhauling our zoning code to be consistent with the growth policy. Now, we anticipate having a PUD ordinance in place before then and maybe tweaked a little bit through that. But the zoning code that's in place now, I have a feeling it's going to look substantially different. Once it's brought into, so that it supports, I don't want to say compliance because the growth policy isn't regulatory, but once it. Changed to support that. And so I think you might, that kind of like, hey, anything goes in this district. You know, I think. If you have zoning, you, you have some expectation of what you want to see there. And to basically just have a district where I don't do anything. I don't know, for me, I'm not sure what the point of that zone is, but again, I'm kind of here for myself. But yeah, this again is some accountability. It's, it's, the city knows what they're getting. The developer knows what they're gonna be allowed to do and what's expected of them. The public knows what's gonna happen and how it's gonna happen over time, so, um, I don't know that. Each is going to be the same, so however the uses are looked at, you know, that's going to be on an individual basis. And some of these may not be as dense like this. I've seen ones where they're, you know, like literally half of this is not developed. So that they can have more over here. Is that kind of answer?
Yeah. Um, the other question I had was like, how applicable is this to Livingston? Like, when a lot of what, a lot of the cities that's been annexed has been developed. So is it something that is infill or is it something that's on the outside or how?
Yeah, I mean, I, it, it kind of dovetails off your last question. And I, I think it's more applicable in some areas than others. I mean, quite honestly, I, I would not expect to see a PUD application coming in from a high place of zone to highway commercial. Given what's currently allowed in highway commercial, it's our most permissive zone, quite honestly. There's really not much you can't do in highway commercial, so. So looking for any, you know, sort of density bonus or anything like that probably is not very likely there. That said, I've had a number of, of large landowners and members of the development community reach out and express interest in this. And the, you know, week or so that we've been talking about it, so. Yeah, I, I would expect that probably when this ordinance is passed and we have this ability to take in these applications. We probably are going to see some applications come in. The, I will say, just, you know, kind of anecdotally, most of the people I'm talking to, it's. You know, it's infill in the sense that it's already part of the city and it's surrounded by other, you know, developed plans. But it's, you know, I've not been talking to people, you know, about downtown infill. In part because I don't think the size of the properties, you know, were, were fitness, but. Yeah, exactly. Yeah, I guess, yeah, yeah. So, but I, yeah, I, I think there's going to be some interest in this, especially like I said, areas that are in the highway commercial or.
I think we'll do Jim and then Tori do that.
Um, I'm just getting back to our function, so. Somebody brings up an application for PUD. You guys look it over and you send it on to us. And essentially, we would look at that in addition to the, just the normal, we don't think that we should go up there, whatever. So it's essentially stacked up a bunch of variances we would be looking at. And saying. You know, they want to do this, this, and another thing that deviates from the R two or whatever. And so we're saying, we think that's okay, yeah, 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 all of this, that and other thing. And then what would we, what would our, how would we pass that on to the city commission? What, what would our recommendations be, I guess, if it's?
That would be much the same as it is today, the recommendation to approve, approve with conditions or.
But we could. Some of those variances that they.
So the, the zoning part, the deviations from the zoning is entirely under the program of the zoning. It is not something that the planning board will look at. So those become, you can't condition zoning text amendments or changes. But you can basically say as they're proposing it or as it's been discussed and modified in the zoning commission approval. This is, and, and then it lists the DB, like the, the conditions, I guess, and I hate to use that word, but for the zoning. Is these are the deviations from the base zone that we approve. We're allowing this height, we're allowing this density, minimum lot sizes, all of that. That's what's going to come out of the zoning part of the view. And for yours, it's the same types of conditions that you would apply for a subdivision review. Um, it has to comply with streets with our development standard environment. There's some other things too about like lighting and landscape buffers that might also go in there.
Okay.
Yeah, and again, we're kind of.
What we would be basing our decisions on, the criteria similar to some other review, but it goes into a couple of different.
Yeah, this kind of stuff, but again, like showing, showing us all this and, and. Yeah. Sorry, but, um.
Yeah, I'm Tori. Did you want to say something, Tori? Your hand is up and I think she's letting you, or you have to unmute so that we can hear you. Still muted. You see your hand is up, Tori, but we don't hear you.
Can you hear me? So I'm having some, I'm having some connectivity issues. Um, so pretty straightforward question. And, but it's, it's pretty related to Jonathan's question. Um, and I'm just wondering what you see as an advantage of the PUD over upzoning? So over just, you know, changing the zoning regulations to. And, you know, be permissive of something like the example that you showed us from Calispel. I, I think one of the concerns that I have is that. To Jonathan's point, there are plenty of, of areas within the city. That are more permissive in their zoning, which the, the zoning commission and the city commission have. Indicated our areas through that zoning process have indicated those are areas where. The city sees potential for higher density development. And then in the areas with, with lower density, that's where the city sees less potential for high density development. And so I, um, I'm curious, you know, if we, if we are amenable to higher density development in other areas. What is the advantage of doing it in this more ad hoc approach through PUD? As opposed to. A, a more streamlined, straightforward approach. I, part of the context for this question is that I, I'm aware in Galton County. Galton County has twenty some odd different zoning districts in, throughout the valley. Um, and that leads to an incredibly burdensome just pro- zoning and land use planning process there. Um, and I worry, you know, if we get to the point in Livingston where, where growth is even, the growth pressures are even greater than they are today. Whether that's, you know, something that we have capacity to handle. So that was kind of a sprawling question, but, um, if you don't remember all of it, I'm, I'm happy to reiterate.
Um, yeah, no, I, this is Jennifer, I can, um, I think I can address that, that, that just a kind of what's, what's the benefit of that versus. Just having an upzoning. I mean, it's. I am personally of the mind that the more you. Chances are that you're going to miss this. Um, I don't, I don't think a, a well-written code that again allows for flexibility typically has. It's coming in multiple, multiple times a year. But, um, and for this, I mean, you're saying upzoning, but, and I don't want to say a PUD is an upzone. I, it's a rezoning, it's a modified zone. Because, and, and that's why it's specific to each PUD that comes in each site that they're coming in for. Because what's appropriate for one PUD, um, may not be appropriate. And chances are it's not appropriate for the same thing and the same density of development, type of development, um, as in another. Like if we had, if we had raw land that was big enough to merit a, a PUD proposed in, on the south side or in downtown. And you can see it's vastly different. Than on the north side. I didn't, I'm, I'm not even sure I can think of. I don't know that there's a lot of need for that type of thing in downtown because so many different uses that are already allowed there. You know, I. That to me is, the PUD, yes, is, instead of creating more zoning districts. So that we don't have that kind of overwhelming code with twenty different zoning districts. So each of these will have a part in the zoning code, that at least that's how I've seen that others have done. It's just entered in the record, the development agreement is for this PUD, we call it the, the. I don't know, the rock farm PUD. This is what's allowed, so this is a zoning just for that area. But then we're gonna go out and we're gonna have, I don't know, sunshine PUD. And that's going to be a separate entry, it's going to be a separate zoning district, if you will, an overlay district. Even though it's still called the PUD, it's its own unique zoning district. And it's gonna have different densities, different uses probably. So I don't know. I think this is a little more. Comprehensive look at development on a larger parcel than maybe just a rezoning. Um, and that to me would be the benefit. I also don't see, you know, right now, and again, because the growth policy encourages infill and, and pretty much discourages sprawl. At this point, as it's written now, um, you know, this, I don't see. Where we would necessarily have an opportunity for even twenty PUVs. I mean, we don't have, I don't think that I know of that many raw tracts of land that are, you know, significant size. To, to, to mean that we would have a lot. Now, somebody asked me last night, well then, you know, why even, you know, have this if we're only going to have a few? Well, this is what the ordinance, you know, we think needs to do to work for us now to support the growth policy. Growth policies typically are updated every five years or so. And at the rate Livingston's changing, it may be that in five years, the growth policy. You know, changes a little bit, and then that's when we can look at the PUD ordinance, also zoning. You know, you're gonna have to update everything for that, and maybe it changes again a little bit. But, um, it's more specific to a site. And to me, that's kind of the benefit is your expectation, you're able to sort of say. I'm gonna help shape development that we think is appropriate to this site based on our growth policy, based on what we're hearing from, you know, the public. Versus, we have this zoning district that we can apply in these different places that have the same allowances in all those different places. You know, does that make any sense? I mean, doubt.
No, I think the, the key is what you hit on there, um, that it's, it's a little bit more of an integrated and comprehensive approach. Whereas, you know, yeah, we could just go and upzone everything to R three or mixed use or highway commercial or, you know, pick a, pick a district. We can put everything that's undeveloped into that. Kind of a blunt approach that just opens the door for whatever subdivision application comes in. That wants to take advantage of, you know, the R three or the mixed use. This is a little bit more of a, again, a little bit more of a integrated slash sophisticated approach that ensures that, that there is some open space dedication. That there are some other community goods, community amenities, positive public benefit in exchange for that, you know, that, that, that density. You know, because I, my, my hunch is if we just went and took everything that's R two and turned it to mixed use tomorrow. We'd probably get some, some applications in that would not match the growth policy or the community's expectations of, of what they want to see. And so it's, it's a little bit of a way to kind of retain some hold on, on the applications that come.
And, and also we're just trying to keep the character of the community, which is a large part of the discussion, um, the growth policy.
Exactly, exactly. So commissioner, hopefully that, hopefully that's a helpful answer for you.
Yeah, I appreciate it and I, I am, am generally. I generally feel like this sounds like a great idea and I think my, my concern is really closely. Aligned with Jonathan's, which is that the, the places where this will be. Where this will be applicable are going to be in those lower zone peripheral areas. And so it, it, it seems like it could end up being a mechanism through which developers try and push through incongruous. Incongruous projects, and I understand that the, the PUD process allows for some kind of extraction for, for public good, and I appreciate that. But I, I also maybe just see more potential for, for lawsuits from developers who say they want a PUD so that they can do. A high density project on the periphery and then. You know, I guess, I guess what that makes, I guess where that brings me is that I hope that on- once this becomes, uh, more of a. A formal proposal that they're really clear. There's really clear expectations and outlined expectations of the developers to demonstrate the public good. And that, that those decisions can be made in a, um, in a transparent and relatively formulaic way from the decision-making body. So that we're not. So that the, so that, um, we're not accused of, uh, you know, picking and choosing our favorite projects.
Thank you. That's absolutely a very valid concern and, um, I think, uh, this group as well as zoning will see as, as things move forward. You know, I, I, the, the Calispel PUD ordinance comes to mind, you know, they're very prescriptive about density bonuses. You know, they, they cap it out at twenty percent, you know, over the underlying zoning. And then they also even, you know, kind of further restrict that and say, you know, uh, two additional residential units per each, you know, D to four million. So it's actually, you know, there are very, very defined limits and metrics, um, involved in that one. You know, we, we talk about it internally, how, how well prescribed you would want that to be. And so I think that's probably the next phase of this conversation is, is really getting down.
Yeah, and I did, I'm just, a slide that I sort of skimmed over to get to, um, that is a PUD. But if you look at this, um, the application materials, they're, they're very, it's, it's a hefty application. I mean, and it's, you know, again, they have to identify clearly how they're deviating from the base zoning. And they have to show all the, the different types of uses, densities, even structures, architectural elevations we can require. How traffic is going to be handled, parking utilities, pedestrian and multimodal interconnectedness. The phasing of the development, and then for the review and approval, again, they need to demonstrate not only, you know, the public benefit of the PUD. Versus just developing it under the base zoning. And then how it supports the growth policy. I think if, if they can't demonstrate how all of that works, then, then I would say that I'm not sure that it's a PUD that, that works for us. all of that works, then then I would say that I'm not sure that it's a P U D that that works for us.
Um, I'm just gonna ask some of the other um board first, if they have any questions. Alicia?
Okay.
Um, Amy?
No.
Shannon? I haven't heard from you.
I'm good.
Okay, okay. Jesse?
Just a quick one. So Viewscapes and and uh Night Sky, was that in there too when I was reading?
That's part of our rights.
Yeah, okay, so that's already in there.
In in new subdivisions now, my understanding is actually, Shannon said that, and we have new subdivisions coming in there. Street lighting, whatever, it has to be. So.
And then like not obstructing view.
Yeah, I think that that's why, you know, again, you sheds and and blocking, you know, having higher stuff right next to, you know, single-family residences, chances are you're you're blocking some of them. So maybe if you move that to the middle and and and, you know, in your community, if you wanna have the apartments right next to it or the townhomes. But as far as what's established, yeah, and I think you can't take their value of the view shed away from somebody.
Okay.
And that's something that we, as the planning board, would be able to have input on, or that's part of the zoning?
No, that's, I think that's all, if any of that is looked at under under um impacts, like a subdivision impacts. Um, so there's, you know, how does it impact, what if that, forgive me, because I haven't done one yet, so I'm gonna miss the categories. But like effects on agriculture, are these lands, you know, used for agriculture now? Or how would this affect agriculture and anywhere surrounding? Um, you look at wildlife corridors, impacts to natural areas, all of that, you know, I would say your your view shed, you know, um I can find a way to state it.
Viewshed though would also be the impact of the height of
Yep.
of proposed development. So
Exactly.
if somebody came in and said they wanna build sixty feet, and that would be an exception to whatever the existing is now.
You would need to see how that impacts.
This group would would have a chance to discuss that and say, you know.
I think that could be criteria. I mean, again, I don't know what subdivision criteria is gonna look like in two months. It could be totally different. Um, but yes, I I think I'm gonna go out of the assumption that if Calisbell can bring certain things into their review of it, and they have the same type of government. And so we here otherwise, we can also sort of evaluate some of those things. And I think they do fall under those categories that we already look at. Maybe we just, I don't know if we've been looking at them that way in the past, but I think we can I I think there's those categories can fit a lot of, you know what I mean? Like, I think we can.
So there's like twelve categories, I mean, subdivision like you that that staff usually requires too. And uh, so what you're, what I'm hearing you say is that we could also, you know, maybe look at them in a broader version vision in some ways on some of them, if maybe.
I think that that is something that would be my responsibility as staff to ensure that here's how I'm evaluating your area based on the on your project on the subdivision criteria. And part of what our criteria is, is, you know, how are you impacting whatever it goes around, or the view shed, or the wildlife corridors, or you know, wildlife habitat, however that works out. Um, and I'll know more once I actually get some vision in front of me and go through all that. But I think there's I think, I think they're general enough to fit.
Oh, again, there's a lot of those.
We should do that. Did you have any more questions on that?
Nope.
Just one, uh, just for that, so.
John. I just have one quick question. Um, when you were looking at the benefits, um, it, I think that I'm just excited because I think that it fits in the house in action plan really well. Um, but one of the questions I had was you you mentioned affordable housing requirements potentially as a part of this. And um we were really, when we were making the housing action plan, we're really excited about inclusionary zoning. And then that was um made illegal by the legislature during the last legislative session. So I was wondering if affordable housing requirements are a realistic component of this, if that's allowed.
I think the density bonuses seem to be allowed with Calisbells. And so I think that's how we can give you a density bonus if you include this much um or workforce housing. Um, so it's not a requirement, really, it's a you can have this if you decide that you do this.
So there's a way to get around.
I'm I'm not a, I'm not getting around anything. I'm not an attorney. I'm just saying, to me, that's less of a requirement and more of a, we'll do this for you if you voluntarily do this for us.
Okay. Yeah, it's 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 that public benefit.
Yeah. Um, and I don't know that it it makes sense to have, you know, to I think there should probably be a formula, how you do your density height bonuses based on kind of what we can have. And we haven't developed that yet. Maybe it's, you know, this much open space or, you know, whatever, this many workforce housing units or however it's done. Um, you know, we are right now in our code, we are allowed for the A D Us um to deed restrict them as A D Us because of the impact fee, because it's half. So I think we looked at this. So that's one way to say, okay, then you did restrict this as, now, it's not looking at affordability necessarily. But you can't have that as your primary residence. Um, you know, if you decide to do that, then you're gonna have to kick in the rest of the impact fees. So it's kind of, again, there's an incentive. You can have half an impact fees if you decide to put an A D U on their property. Typically, A D Us smaller, right? Um, so um, again, we lost the eight hundred square feet, mistaken. So that is typically incentive for maybe somebody that's looking for rental, that kind of thing. Um, long-term, you know, workforce, that kind of thing.
Thank you. I had just a couple of questions. Um, did I hear you say that you were going to hire an outside consultant for the zoning?
Not for this reason. The 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 P U D ordinance we are working on in-house. Um, the overhaul of, in general, chapter thirty of the zoning code. Right now, this is a new element to the zoning code. But the zoning code in in the growth policy identifies there are a lot of places right now, as it is, where it is not supportive of the growth policy. So that's what we're looking at. And I anticipate that's going to be a very big, heavy lift. Um, something I cannot do. I I'm not an expert at that. We want somebody that this is what they do. Um, certainly, there will be i- in a way, a public process, there will be input. Um, and we want that. But um, yeah, we're we're hoping that looking at some grants maybe to help us out with that, but it's gonna be a big process.
My other question is, in reading the growth policy, it kept referring to um as seen in section X, and I'm going, where is section X? It was like three times, and I couldn't find it anywhere in in the appendix or in the back of the growth policy.
Send me what you're looking for, I can try to find it. Um.
I just was wondering.
I noticed a couple of which is. Okay, so maybe. Yeah, and there's, and it may have been, they just forgot that the appendices number in there, so.
Okay, and they were going to and whatever.
Perhaps.
placeholder. I don't know.
Yeah.
That's what I used next one.
Somebody forgot to do, you know, control left.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It happens to be in that section about three times, referring to section X, so.
Um, oh, I know what that was you're talking about in the growth policy. Because that was left open, because that was taken from somebody else's template. So for that specific, they're saying we would fill it in with where we're referring to in our code when we make the ordinance. That and that is, that's what that is.
So it's like
It's a placeholder.
placeholder.
Yes, I know what you're talking about. Okay.
I just had a question about your predictions on, if you have any, on the timelines for getting the zoning.
This, the the P U D?
You know, the zoning code update. So we are, we've already started figuring out the process for that internally. We have reached out to some consultants. We are getting ready to draft a scope of work or a request for proposals. Um, we are waiting until we get a little bit more along in the legislative session before we release and want that, those bits, those proposals back. Because there is a lot of land use conversations that are happening currently.
I think it fits right into our next.
But I want you to get past the legislative session. We're talking two years.
Uh, I we would hopefully have the request for proposals out towards the end of the legis- legislative session. Um, and then from the time we bring in consultant on, our initial conversations with the the consulting community have been that we should expect a year-long process. And so.
So um, if there aren't any other questions, Jennifer, on this subject. Anybody else have any more questions? Then I think it it makes sense to go on into the role of planning board in in the P U D development process.
Uh, yeah, um, I think right now, like I said, I I as Jim and I and Eddie Grant have have looked at these different ordinances in different places, and especially with the combined boards. Um, we're sort of seeing where things that are like, wait a minute, now we need to figure out how this is gonna work. So um, I would, I do not see that we're gonna have anything to move forward for review, um, even for zoning, for the ordinance itself, that the text, the change is meant to be in the zoning. But I think there are a lot of places that I would I would like to have the planning board have input. Um, I need to go back and look at the list of what's in that sample P U D ordinance. The different things you were talking about. I would like to look at sort of how Calisbell gets a little more qualitative in in their analysis of subdivisions. I think they kind of drill it down a little more than just kind of the general, you know, oh, this doesn't impact wildlife, or then. Um, and I I I get the impression that's what you would like to see and be able to sort of, you know, i- if we're, if they're gonna have public benefits, then then these are the types of things we wanna see. So you tell us how you're gonna meet these requirements within what's under the subdivision. Again, I think because of the legislature, I I I, we can certainly draft something up and get your input and and get it there. I don't think we're gonna end up passing anything until it's done.
It's certainly be later in the legislative session.
Yeah, and that's what April, I think, I think. So, but yeah, so I think um, I'm happy to send this PowerPoint out. I know that zoning asked for it last night. I'm happy to send this one out that was tailored for planning board. Um, I also told them I'm happy to send out um links to the three P U D ordinances that I mentioned. Um, and I'd like to do some more research on maybe how what we are able to, right now, as it stands, under the subdivision ordinances of the state. What level of sort of um requirements we can have, looking down, asking for those things, and then bring that back to you at the next meeting, get them to you before, and then have you guys weigh in on that. If that's amenable to you.
Um, does that sound like something that would be workable for everybody?
Um, you're certainly welcome to look into more, but the P U D ordinances, but I my my goal is to have maybe Debbie uh, I say me, Jim, Brandon, we're gonna, but us do sort of the research and provide you with it to comment on, because I'm sure you have lots of other fun stuff to do.
Well, and and I just, um, I think Calisbell is a wonderful city, but it is also a very large
Yes.
city and would like to keep that in mind when you're researching, that we really need to have this be applicable to a small community.
That is something we're keeping in mind, that like, the only, the main reason we're looking at Calisbell, Columbia Falls, and Harden is because they were, I think, the only three um general governments um type of governments that had P U D ordinances in Montana. So if they're able to do it, I'm I'm hoping that that means it was vetted and they're really allowed to ask for these things. Of course, we will have our own legal review on whatever we draft. Um, but that's, I think, why we decided to start there. And it's certainly, yes, I agree. I don't think, again, there's just not the raw land, there's not the space, there's not the desire for growing out that that I have seen from Calisbell.
Right.
So, yeah.
And if it means that you stumble upon something from another state that happens to be from a small community, you bring it.
Yeah, but I I will, it's it's again, the subdivision regs here are tricky because there, we have to be so in line with what the state has. Um, so I'm still kind of figuring all that out. Um, but like I said, I I see a lot of requests for a sort of I'd call it more detailed qualitative information on on the P U Vs out of Calisbell that I looked up and to end with that than than what I saw in the two subdivisions that came through review in in Livingston um in the past six months that I wasn't there for, but I well, North County was, but, yeah.
And so what I'm hearing you say is by doing this, bringing, researching it, bringing it to, back to this group, that we will have a chance to discuss what you have found and make other suggestions or recommendations or questions that we have to ask um, or to to help fine tune the the final product.
Yes, and I I would say it's, I mean, you can't hurt to ask. I mean, give me your, your, you know, perfect ideal wish list. And then I can go look and see if it's something really we can put in there and it makes sense.
Yeah, and I would offer, if there's anything, you know, that's coming to mind now, feel free to let us know, because we are working on drafting the ordinance. We've got a draft table and contents for the ordinance. And now we're, you know, that's the skeleton, right, that we'll start to bring stuff. And so, you know, for some of those different sections, we will, at the next meeting, have, you know, a little bit of a literature review of those three P or P U D ordinances and a few others, and talk about some of their different elements, you know, like we've got here, and just kind of what makes sense for Livingston. Because, yeah, we're not, we're not Harden or Calisbell or anything like that.
So is there any other questions that you would like to ask either of him at this point?
I just think it sounds great. I'm I'm excited for the opportunity to go through the process with you guys. Um, and be able to, you know, provide some info.
Me too.
Yeah, I I, from our side, we think it could be very valuable to them. Um, yeah, it seems like we've gotten a few subdivision applications that, um, you know, the city, the town, the community was less than thrilled about. So I think this is a good opportunity to
Yeah, it's great. Okay, is there anything else you wanna add at this point?
No, I think so.
And then we'll move on to old business. And I believe you had clarification on the site plan review.
Um, yes, I do. And I think I actually just. I I, you were asking about what triggers site plan review, and I realize this board does not review site plan review applications. They are reviewed administratively, but I gave you some incorrect and incomplete information. And so I just wanted to clarify that real quickly. If you would like me to. That that was, that was the. Um.
Okay.
And I apologize for the kind of long information, so I wanted to clarify it. Um, so the triggers right now are site plan review. And again, we are discussing if we wanna make some tweaks to site plan reviews fairly six months, seven months. Yeah, less than a year. I think it's been in place. And again, it is administrative, but um he's doing, maybe some tweaks to this. Um, but the the projects that trigger site plan review. Um, the ten or more dwelling units on a single lot, so that's why that woodwork that you asked that Shannon was talking about, and you guys were asking questions about a woodwork project over by products. That's, it has ten units, so that's why it triggered the site plan review process. Um, ten thousand or more square feet of gross floor area of commercial or industrial use on a single lot. Ten thousand or more square feet of outdoor storage area on a single lot. Twenty or more parking spaces on a single lot, and any addition to an existing use that needs this. So right now, what that means is, is if you have a building and you have um your use changes, maybe you had, I don't know, a restaurant in there, and you end up going to a movie or something like that. Um, if the new use would trigger twenty or more parking spaces, if if it requires that for the living requirements, and we look at that, it's in our code, um, then it would trigger the site point review process. Um, but I think I told you. But I think I told you, I don't remember if I told you ten dwelling units, and I think I left out the ten thousand square feet. So I just wanted to clarify that for you.
Any questions on that?
And Shannon, I don't know if you noticed, Shannon had some love off. He said he can provide a written update, public works update if you want that.
Okay, I had just wondered if there was anything new we had done in the last month since he gave us a pretty comprehensive one the last meeting. So just didn't know if we had anything else. So if he wants to send something out, that would be great. We just like to be kept in loop as to what he's working on. All right. We have a, any board comments? Alicia, do you have any comments?
I love the idea of Jennifer going to get all the information, getting it to us that we can prepare for the next meeting.
And Amy?
No.
Tim? Jesse? Tori, did you have any other comments?
Uh, just thanks to Jennifer for presenting that to us. It's really interesting. And I think there's a lot of potential and look forward to seeing how, how it develops. It, the, the microphone is quite sensitive in there, and it sounds like there is a wild party happening in your.
Share.
And I just thank you also, Jennifer Grant, for working on all this information. Looking forward to working on it together. So anything else? And then I guess if there isn't anything else, if there's no objection, we'll adjourn the meeting at seven twenty.